Well, I have a gavel, but we'll go anyways. So I would like to call it the City of Ocean Shore's Planning Commission Meeting. It is Tuesday, July 11th, the time is 2:03. We are at the Ocean Shore's Library. Alright, so I apologize for the disorder, but there was an event here earlier, but we're just trying to catch up from that and get done. Um, do not have to take a motion, but um Dan Burke is on excused absence. He had medical with his partner and he had given enough in advance notice, so we don't have to do a motion to excuse him. So we will first do the roll call, roll call. Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Barr.
Yeah.
Commissioner Schultz.
Here.
Commissioner Wallace.
Here.
Alright, and with me, we have a forum. We do have a vacancy, and so if you know somebody interested, please have them apply. Uh, it's really, really much, much better if we have a full seven member because we just don't have a lot of flexibility if somebody is there for otherwise. But if you know anybody, please encourage them. And what I've been telling people is just come to a meeting and see if it's your thing. If you have an interest, and then if you do, come back. If not, you know, let us know. That's what we're doing. On the meeting agenda, I have one change to make. Item five, it says review of district 17, 17A, 18, 19, 19A. That will be led by Paul Schultz, not Mark Wallace. Quite happy to hear that. So do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Mark, if I have a second? Second. All in favor? Unanimous. Alright, so on the minutes, I have on the first set of minutes, I have one change on page three. It said minutes taken by Commissioner Wallace. Mark is very popular for some reason. So the minutes were actually taken by me at that meeting. So first, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City of Shore's Planning Commission Meeting on May 3rd, 2023? Mark has moved, second? Gary, all in favor? This is so easy, Paul, for saying people keep going and going. Alrighty. There was a little confusion, and I'll explain, Mark, on what we were doing when we approved minutes. What we were doing was deferring May 23rd and going forward. So I made a slight change to your minutes, just so you know. But everything else to me appears to be good on those minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission Meeting on June 7th, 2023? Mark has moved, second?
Second.
Gary? No move. So uh, look, yes, we did get public communication in there twice.
Yes.
I forgot to check. So at this time, we're going to open for any pre-midi public comments, and then as we have done with the updated agenda, we will also be taking public comments at the end of the meeting. Do we have any public comments in the room before the meeting? None? Any comments online on Zoom before the meeting?
No comment. Thank you.
Alright, as you know, Brian Buckman, our Vice Chair resigned, and I was in error by not having an election for a new Vice Chair at the last meeting. So at this point, we're going to open the floor for nominations for the new Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations?
I would be glad to serve if anyone else would like.
Oh, we need a nomination? Do we have a second? Alright, Thorndale has second, the nomination of Mark as the Vice Chair. All in favor? Alright, unanimous. That is awesome. Thank you, Barr. Unless I get sick or have a class capacitated, it's a pretty simple and easy job. There was some confusion and miscommunication on the agenda, so we're missing a couple of handouts. So what I would like to do is I'm going to hand this out. This is a purpose and guiding principle that we had worked on two minutes ago, two meetings ago. I will basically go through what I had done for updates, and then from there, uh, we will talk about if we want to make any more changes. And kind of what I view this as, as we go forward and start briefing our council and public, sort of explain what went into our thoughts on how we will rather do this. Um, and again, this is a very rough draft, but I can see these continuing to evolve as we go up. Based upon input, I reworded the purpose, and I've said the purpose of the update to the Ocean Shore's Washington zoning and municipal code is to identify correct discrepancies in the 2020 Ocean Shore's Comprehensible Plan, simplify the code, and reflect past and present realities of development within the City of Ocean Shore. Thoughts on sort of the purpose? I mean, I was a little, I mean, correct discrepancies, but that's okay. I mean, that's really what we're trying to do here is, you know, bring municipal code, rezoning, chapter 17, in line with the comprehensive plan, because there's a lot of variance. We're trying to simplify the code, and as we go through it, we're, it's anything but simple, and reflect the past and present realities of development within the City of Ocean Shore. And that's really what we're talking about, is we do want to walk around and look at, you know, what's feasible and what can be done and what's been going on. The first guiding principle is use the 2020 Ocean Shore's Comprehensible Plan as a guide, and also be willing to update both the comprehensive plan and the zoning municipal code as required. At this point, we've really seen no requirements to change the comprehensive plans. We'll get there when we get into some of the business districts and some of the other stuff, but right now, we're pretty low to line with somebody who pulls my way off in the comprehensive. I think we're okay.
Need to respect the, what the plan says and what practices being in those areas?
As far as the, yeah, and not from a spatial standpoint, more from a narrative standpoint as to what we're trying to get into. From a spatial, spatial standpoint, there's going to be a huge difference, I think, between the comprehensive plan and the zoning, because the comprehensive plan sometimes fails to reflect the past and present realities of development. So then we'll have to make a decision. Do we want to update the comprehensive plan, or do we just leave it until next year?
One thing we might want to add in here, and I'm just thinking that technically, our role isn't to change anything. It's to advise council on things we're seeing that look like they're out of sync. So to me, if, if somebody that wasn't involved in this looked at it, they think, oh my God, the planning commission is changing up everything, when we're really not. We're an advisory role, and that's what we're doing, bringing up the discrepancies and making recommendations on what we think the changes should be in order for council to make some advised, intelligent decisions on what they may want to do.
Absolutely. Now, that definitely needs to be throughout. And, you know, probably needs to go into the purpose as well as the first guiding principle. That's great pickup. Thank you. And that's been a confusion throughout. We have no authority, we're only advisory body. We weren't voted for anything. And what I didn't put in here is public involvement, because rezoning has its own massive public involvement. So we haven't talked about this yet, but this really probably is going to be, as we grind through this, sort of a first draft discussion with city government and elected vote. Um, and then from there, the real, already is going to be references, cross connections where, uh, within chapter 17, I think we can manage that. The larger issue we're going to have is as in particular, chapter 15 references chapter 17, it's going to be a whole lot of changes. If we read number 17, eliminate a section or change the number of a section, then wherever any part of the other code references back into 17, it's going to be a lot of work in the code. So that's something we'll have to talk about, and it's something I'd love to get outside help on. Just that simple gridding of looking up every existing number that's there where it's cross connected. Um, we had talked about simplifying the current zoning map and municipal code. I'm not sure if it'll be there on the map, but we probably will on the code. And we talked about reflecting, I putting quote, on the ground realities of historical and recent development in Ocean Shore. That's kind of vague, but it isn't. Maintain and improve the current character of city, single-family housing areas. And that's something we need to really, really, really want to make sure that we look at, because that's something that's definitely in everybody's interest. Seek opportunities and areas to, seek opportunities and areas to create opportunities for. So I need to reword that. Seek opportunities and areas to create ability for more formal housing, especially single-family houses. I need to get rid of that set of opportunities, that are synonym. Enhance the Ocean Shore's resident visitor experience for a more aesthetically pleasing downtown area. Get us some input from a citizen at last night's meeting, saying she thought the code said you couldn't put political signs in the downtown district. It actually does. I love it. The sign code is actually in China. Doesn't anymore. Another one from Resident Ask. Alright, it'd be nice. And identify areas for resort type and politically excuse areas. I think we're sort of doing that as we walk around. Any more thoughts and input on this? I mean, I've got to make a couple of changes. I'll bring it back next week. Now, we'll probably look at this as frequently as we need to.
I have a question. Is there any jeopardy in the zoning code that does not align with the comprehensive plan?
Uh, there's no jeopardy, I don't think. I'm not sure. Do you know?
I don't. I, I mean, enforcement is of the code, the municipal code. There's, there doesn't seem to be any consequence for not enforcing the comprehensive plan. Like, I think the comprehensive plan is used to guide guide the code modifications as necessary, you know, as the community evolves. So I don't think, because they don't agree, I don't think there's jeopardy there.
No. And the comprehensive plan gets referred to in all sorts of things like shore, natural plan, and all sorts of other stuff, more than its own income. But we felt this, to answer the question for, this was more seen as an opportunity to look at some of the key points in the current zoning code and look at opportunities to, you know, like we talked about, simplify it, provide opportunities for more for affordable, not affordable housing, you know, middle housing. Every time you hear the mayor talking, comes back from a meeting in Olympia or something like that, all he talks about is middle housing and how that's coming and how we managed to avoid it. So I mean, sort of getting ahead of that is a good thing. So I think those are sort of the big things. Using this as an opportunity, both aligned with the comprehensive plan and look for other opportunities and things that we just moved to do. So answered sort of what we're going to have doing. So that's, that's kind of where we're at on that. So now uh, we're going to actually wander over to the map as a group, I think. Is that easier for you, Paul, and kind of go through the map? Because we gave Paul one of the hardest ones to do. So we're going to kind of go through 17, 17A, 19 and 19A. And before we do that, I'm sure I want somebody to look over my shoulder and probably I need Marshall, most here. One of the things we talked about was taking this high density all of this. Changing all of this, these all tourists, right? And realizing we're still under defined, these all tourists based on region. And this is, we also talked about, this is very interesting. With this block right here. You've got a block along, and maybe with this block. Misuse. That's what we're talking about.
Yep.
We did, right, yes. And we're going to define misuse. I'm generally talking misuse as being residential, probably a, being after that, residential and low impact. Recommendation, we will give these all current.
Yeah, the, uh.
Rather than make it high density. Just same thing, resort tourist, but with resort tourists giving the opportunity for some commercial. And then taking this bit and making that, instead of calling that resort tourist, just making this bit and cutting it off at this set of blocks. But I agree, it's a deal available, that you want to hear, or rather than go across that one, go right across the market.
This is going from the single-family development, from basically that green belt all the way down to Senator Street along in there. There's, yeah, just, just a handful.
My, my gut feeling is it's going to happen in this next year, so it's going to be a lot more intentional than commercial.
Exactly.
Right, it's right now, you, you're, you're, this is concept. I, I can't, I mean, it's not always true. And so if we, we change it to misuse, now that opens up that opportunity. It's not in the books right here. It doesn't mean that, you know, happen, but it provides that opportunity for them.
Well, please, if people wanted, they always going to look over our shoulders, you're out, you've talked for a long time, like, I'm not always. But what we were talking about is just part of the lower blocks, which is probably less than 20% built, maybe this mixed. Give the opportunity, like we had talked about, for Bodega, smaller, there is that sort of option in this team. This is all currently on the comprehensive plan, on the resort forest, and this can hear as I am, so we, we make it through door forest. And it's from the American here, which is mostly now kind of videos with maybe half a dozen, the single family fixed in there. It actually, despite, I mean, it's very few of the backside lots. So we saw this at the hotel, even future in the city, recommend to council that any desire of the comprehensive plan to generate you know, sections of the city for this resort tourist type opportunity, this area held a longer duty of, and that area followed last year made here. We haven't yet talked, and so probably would definitely, not just bring the one out and start by definition. So that's going to be, but the general view is high density, kind of video. With with some commercial overnight, I mean, it's all that's on.
And now I wanted to do something like that. I couldn't because it's not zoning from that. So I'm not saying it's going to happen, but at least if it's zoned appropriately, it gives that business opportunity a shot.
So we were today, did I label wrong on the agenda?
Uh, Paul?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll show us what you did. When you did have your, what? So kind of what did you see as you went around from start to fifteen?
Well, as, as I could round, I'd stand a lot of options. Uh, mostly, uh, that's fabric, uh, R1. I mean, it's all R1, but how's, how do um, all of them, they're and also this, uh, we
one of the things we looked at, I'm so glad we got we got this totally partial that this isn't really R6A, this is R2. So this is the famous green view barrel. So, I mean, partially, I mean, so what you're saying, this is all, you know, setting off these R9s. When you get this huge R9 in here, then all of this, OYHUT basically now comes.
It's, it's this white parcel right here?
Don't try, not OYHUT?
No, so this, this line is the buffer, and that's the buffer OYHUT. And it does not include meaning these lots along here. It does now include, I think there's seven lots across the street. And that stuff just all would be represented as E1 zoning, which would be the same as, uh, this layer of other stuff, huh? Yeah, generally, we tend to.
So where is there would drive entrance into a, like here, right? That's right there. I don't recall. So what's involved with like this? That's all we're thinking. So no, I mean, you can get up in here at all? In seventeen?
Yeah. There's one, one, one plus someone.
Oh, not that.
So I'm going to zone for a lot more, but there's nothing there. On this whole lockdown, green view and all this, like it's, you know, there's about, I would say about 28% of it is built and the rest of it's, you know.
So one of the things we talked about is kind of carving off the existing R2 and higher. Some in here, and then all of this will call in this even being a lot. Yeah, eventually. So I mean, are there thoughts on that? And then these, all of these large, at least all, I know they're covered.
Well, yeah, there's, uh, two owners for these two, these three are one owner, and I believe this long narrow one here is so one person, these three, and this one here.
Boppers?
Boppers do, yeah.
And a lot of those installed.
Yeah, that's, I, I wait for a delineation to come through before I make that statement.
Yeah, there's a, there's a high potential for, but we can't, we'll put it that way. But again, not impossible with proper litigation. So one of the things we talked about was taking, see where I draw this, during this media or high. That's an existing media or high. I'm talking about that last one that I think that one. Sort of did that. For those who sort of catch up, I didn't mean to jump all your, oh, let that go over and go away. You can do sixteen, you can do twelve.
Yeah, I did. I, I go through sixteen.
Okay, so what's more interesting here on sixteen? The all R3, which
That actually helps, that's, um. This, the dark black line is
So sixteen here, this is all, and this actually go to Beltway as much in the middle of it?
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's, that's the green, uh, the green belts, the city of green belts.
And I, and I know Ocean Spray has some higher density in there, probably two, five, two buses and five buses down here.
It's battery. That's what's going on on Ocean Spray right there.
Yeah, okay.
And eight flights and a six flights.
Yeah, yeah. So this is high. And then high. Yeah, I know what those, I know what's happening. Those, you know?
Yeah.
That's great.
When I, when I drove, I didn't tell this to you.
Oh, I know a lot of ways to get in this area. That is one of the few highs being used as a high.
That's cool. Yeah, Mooseport has a couple of, um, I hope they were built as duplexes, but they're on green lines, aren't they?
Yeah. But there's nothing we would call high density on Fox Court. I can call those, uh, or two. Could you all be moving?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what they're called now. This is all single family law, which is final.
For resident sixteen, this green belt is actually owned by the
Yeah, that's, that's that's good. So this is beautiful, single family estate, single family, we don't want to touch that. Paul, did you look at four? We all know. There's no surprise to anybody on what's going on on four. On this side of the street, that one piece, R1. And then it goes to R5, that's been known, known reason.
It might be the transition from single family to a little more intense, and the down end of the beach district, sort of that, I don't know. There's, um, language in the, in the talk plan that talks about transition, so we, potentially use.
So then this is all listed as R3, and that's got all of the above.
Yeah, and I can tell you that even though these are all listed as R3s, and not everyone of those R3 lots has enough area to develop from a density standpoint, you would have to buy two lots to get a truck, that's like.
On this side, there are. Is that correct, Marshall? Are there two R4s, R4 here?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're being developed, um, currently. We get a conditional use hearing this year to develop the common wall structure for subdivision there, and then, uh, there are two developments. I can get up in this general area where we do four places.
Depending on what we provide, this would be then we do the law. Depending on what we, and I, what the comp plan has in that, because is modern, that's on it, it's yeah. So the question, we got very modern, that's we do, we do a lot of that. And we define all of this.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's a question of, you know. Some of them do, and, and when I say they don't have enough space, they miss it by a few square feet. It's one of those deals where I could easily justify a variance for, for some of those.
So the up to including, we're so I'll help you out with what this is all. So this is E1 and E2. So what's going on in here? A wall, you told me that.
I can tell you that that's a lot of single-family residential development. All the way down and developed. Once you get out of the commercial area, there's, um, there's a few camping lots down in that area, and once you get in the commercial, where camping is given to single-family residences, it's a big commercial. Ventures.
It's a commercial venture.
On, on, is this Silver King? No, this is Silver King. So between a wall and Silver King, we've got many storage warehouses. Uh, there's an apartment building on one of these, the Russell, it's on Russell apartment, is that where? Uh, there's a, is that, there's a fourplex? Yeah. So there's some higher intensity uses, um, you know, as you get into the smaller commercial area down here. And then the backside, you know, now Silver King, there's quite a bit of commercial or investment type uses. These exhibition camps, other storage are down here, exhibitions, storage are, we're camp management. Don't have to choose any side.
So I think there is here on these shuttle lots, I wonder if that you were at that time? Alita, Bieber?
Yeah.
Now, where's the barrel?
This, this entire lot right here that developed as um or a transit rail, so I mean, you've got the main warehouses on here, you've got these exhibition and you've got a smattering of uh, main storage businesses all along the rest of that.
So this whole area is just a mess. All mixed use.
It's really next, um, with, with a huge focus along Point Brown, this area here is being developed currently almost exclusively, it has uh duplexes or triflexes or transit rail.
So this is
Along
I know already, you know what's going on here. So this is all one of a medium with overnight rental. Right? We're talking about that, right? Um, that's just reality over there. The question is, what do we do about this?
What's that?
Same family with
These, these are, well, they're, yeah, it's all transit rail, so it's gonna have to stay zone either resort tourists, if you guys add transit rails to the resort tourist definition, or or mixed use commercial or whatever that next.
The problem is, is the commercial that's in there, B two type commercial. You know, when we said mixed use commercial down here, we were talking about the data of small retail.
Yeah.
This is, so this would be an active commercial.
So, and, and the defining line was you wouldn't have commercial occupancy, because you had overnight rental, here you could have commercial occupancy and overnight rental stuff.
Well, it's just a very strange area. So yes, I wrote through here a few days ago, I think I rode down Silver King. And you go from two ground storage yards, backing up on a brand new transit rental house. Basically.
Yeah.
And then you've got the storage units in here, which are good. And they've backed up, and then you've got like the BFW, power repair, I mean, you've got all this storage. So this is really this whole area is really, I'm gonna carve out this ground. This whole area is really, best described as really B two with re- with residential, that's what's going on in there, right? And what the nurses?
Kind of red as that, I'm not even Not even
Oh, there's a, you can say one of them is a heater. Yeah, there's a handful in there. Six, yeah.
Well, I cannot, this is, this is always really the one right. So we didn't talk about this, what is the tall problem?
It's all, that's the heavier
B two
each channel, but it's all underwater. Well, here.
Well, what's not, these are.
Half of them.
What about these are all?
Water.
I'm hoping to figure this out, because they're very low risk, short overnight rental. Right now, this is part of the only non hard reverse, you know, until we lose it overnight, right? Right? And everything there, overnight, or what I do on that building? Not, not, not. But right, you can hold the middle of that there? The export plant. People don't read that. So this, this is, um, we would have to do some more paper on
Some, I, maybe
maybe what this is, is the same as this, media with overnight, the
Yeah. I can't see, I can't see a B two business in the end, in the end. And it would have been that way just for the, for the uh operation of Caporita and developer. Things that were, that, that the early developers were thinking would involve.
So actually, there's some B one thing here. That event right, the No, you don't do one
Awesome, yeah, yeah, that's a transit rail, somebody would never know. Uh, Rainy Port, New Zealand, yeah, this one here, there was a bunch of
So then obviously, this is right now, B one, B two, live residential. All my next five.
As you said, there's a number smash.
This, is there any B one type, B two activity at all down here? Yeah, they're similar, sometimes I So that's B one retail. Paul, you know about with this?
I did, yeah.
So that would be
You think of the five lines?
Yeah. B one apartment falling right in this, um, will turn on to section.
And
Yeah, I remember that.
But actually, but actually
Those, yeah, those are all single family, I didn't have anybody want, in order to develop a uh, a business in the shoreline jurisdiction, it requires significantly more permitting, there's more expense, public hearings, public process. And so far, the hopes on this side now have deferred to a, you know, their building is a single family residence.
So would this match with over here, a medium overnight?
You, you can do transit rentals, uh, we don't want to
Right, right. So I'll do, sort of, we talked, maybe go overnight, or
Or maybe low overnight.
Well, I think we give one loss. What part E that in some part?
It has been three tracks, or three parts.
What are these, what are these? Yeah. Now, this is the part, I'm, I'm a B one, I love
And then the other one on corner of, um, Austin.
So this, I mean, this I'm gonna see. Um, this is sort of all
Again, that seems to be an area where they started transitioning from the R one uses going to a little more density into commercial use, so that's their, that's their transition into the other zones.
Medium overnight, medium overnight. Yeah, anything on these channels? You know, you can comment on that.
Lots of the single family residential, a lot, there's a smattering of single family residential, um, I think everybody's There's a few along the front street.
Because there's nothing low in there, ain't it?
No, not sure. Yeah.
Oh, sorry, so then down here, we've just got I'm sure there's nobody in there, not a vehicle.
But again, you don't know what the investment purpose is.
Exactly, that's No, it's not, not for that moment.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, the problem is, it's gonna be really strange, Paul, when do we ever evolve this part?
Yep. Well, there's a, there's a uh permit, or, and, yeah, no, well, they reduce it to duplex. And there was some, there was some negotiation back off in the DC.
Yeah. So You saw that around by here, I'll find
And if you want to bring it down, I can scan this, um, you know, as you get more information on there, if you want to, you know, record it.
Well, what, what we've come up with off of this, and there's no stuff, we've come up with to, to redefine next years. Right, residential list, that probably calls it. Residential list, we came up with this overnight rental. This medium overnight, B one overnight, and B one, B two with residential. That's also So we've got this really weird mix now in here that we need some to step out and look at that, and we'll talk about this again, by the way, Paul, we've got Paul, we're on the next meeting. Now, perhaps all of this is just all B U. Maybe a B one or medium commercial or something, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, mixed use seems to fit with
That's a little bit of every kind.
Except for water. All you B one, that, that. Oh, and then what's this lot?
Uh, the track, that's owned by Paul.
Oh, and Paul. So? Department, Department I don't know. Well. I think so, I hope it's far, I see, I'm not sure about the the But maybe who was this, like, used to Paul Adams, maybe he exists. I'm not sure. Alright, so I think that's good, I'll try helping. This, all this was drawn, I mean, fine. Got a little time when we do eight, ten, eleven. This is
Yeah.
I'm doing something, working B D on the five o'clock.
Right. Is that, oh, that's how it's going.
So long. That's also a But again, and keep with the company, that's a play, I'm trying to I need to go back and relook at what it says for the resort forester, because I don't think that fits the use going on down in there now. Because we have so much, uh, we have enough B two work with storage and growl yards and repair shops, and that's why, we're getting really careful, the BFW is in there.
Yeah.
And some other costs, just gotta figure out what we do, maybe we don't do anything, maybe we just take the whole thing and make it you said, commercial Just call it commercial, next thing, alrighty. Well, that was fun. Not too painful, so the only thing that didn't make it to the handouts on Hall again, I'm gonna do two over here, is the current code for, oops? Did I get this right?
Yeah.
The current B one, and I think I threw B two, B three, others, we could start looking at how those look like. Well, I tried to capture the little bit of things that we changed, we changed a couple of words in seventeen six oh one oh, red line and the the highlight ad isn't showing up, but the only way out of the word show. We got all the way through seventeen sixteen. Um, the only thing we've talked about, and I'm gonna ask us to have some discussion about that, is permitted uses. We did, there was a, there was a discussion by Thor on making additional dwelling units a specified um, permitted use. And thoughts on the pluses and minuses of adding that as a specified permitted use? Because right now, I, I don't have the additional dwelling units overnight, I'll find in the code, if you got the code open. Oh, this, are ADUs restricted to R ones right now?
I think they're allowed anywhere, anywhere that an R one would be.
Anywhere that any residential, so you could do an ADU in any residential district, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I think, and I just had this discussion with the, with an applicant this morning, um is the, the limitation on you cannot exceed on a blank on the number of square feet.
Eight hundred?
So in, in some zones, um, an ADU, if it were placed on a lot with a single family residence, or they combine lots, put the ADU on it, couldn't uncombine it, because it wouldn't need the minimum square footage of a of a permitted use, single family dwelling, so there could be some, you know, there might need to be an allowance if you're gonna lump the ADUs into second dwellings. You know, to make sure that that if somebody combines lots and then separates lots, they need the minimum square footages. So we don't create a situation where somebody can't divide their lots.
I think it was forty percent of the size of the of the house.
It's eighty percent of the house, not to two eight hundred.
Right, yeah.
Most forty percent of what number do they turn on? About?
Yeah, that's almost two thousand square foot home. So I mean, if you're, if you're gonna get more than eight hundred square feet, you've gotta have a more than two thousand square foot home.
Then we recommended six fifty max, I don't consider
Yeah, we did, we were gonna go to six fifty minimal.
Minimum.
You could actually have two lots, one main view, and then separately, still meant at six fifty.
Yeah, if you met the minimum six fifty, that's what you would have to do, if it was a separate dwelling.
Yeah.
So there is that opportunity in that, now that I, I see it, so I guess the consensus is we leave additional dwelling units not as a specified permitted use in R one, we just leave it as its own chapter. So you, you okay with that, Paul?
That way it comply anywhere you want, or do you wanna do an ADU on a high density?
Uh, yeah, yeah, there's a queue on that there. So the last thing we didn't go through, I hope people brought their May twenty third, or have access to the code online, most of us without computers open, did we look at garages, carports, boat docks, private greenhouses? Do we look at accessory structures with glass, I mean, I can't remember. Yeah, so we need to look briefly at seventeen fifty one ten. Seventeen fifty one ten.
One ten or two?
Seventeen fifty Yeah, seventeen fifty one ten. I'll find it. Just there, there we go, so this is accessory structure standard. accessory structures, although they're fences, walls, and hedges, which we'll talk about. Are permitted on any lot only when there exists such a lot that the principal structure is defined by, there's a house. And provided that temporary accessory structures are permitted when a building permit has been leased for principal structure, but only for so long as that permit is up there. So basically, they're saying you can build your accessory structure before your house. But you can't have it if you don't build the house, eventually, as long as it's not confirmed, is that how you read that? Marshall, I don't think it's ever come up.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, all accessory structures, other than temporary accessory structures, current assets such as a combined law and temporary accessory structure may only be used for storing tools, covering equipment and materials, and use directly incidental with the construction and structure. An accessory structure should be no closer than five feet to the side we were popping lots. However, is anything terrible with that code? Allows you to have a temporary accessory structure during construction. Have you seen anything coming up other than residential garages, carports, private workshops, boat docks, private greenhouses? Marshall, anything else that would deserve note, I guess would be the question?
Um You know, the, the one thing that, that always um seems to throw a question mark up is the use of, um, use of storage containers for accessory um, uses, and there's really, there's nothing in code that talks about, um, you know a container as an accessory structure, other than a, a container, um has metal siding on it, in most cases, which would be prohibited in the R one areas. But, um which side? Uh, which side? Oh, yeah, I guess that would be the other thing, because most of them exceeds the minimum two hundred, or the maximum two hundred square feet.
Yeah, unless we're a mini or
Right, still one per.
So I guess the issue would be is. We don't clearly say that. Um, conexes, don't mess our, no, correct. Conexes are acceptable as temporary accessory structures, but obviously they should be. Cause a temporary accessory structure is only permitted as long as it's an active building permit. So is there a need in seventeen fifty one ten to specify conexes as acceptable? You feel there is?
Well, I've got a few of them that have become permanent structures in.
Right across the street, you got one.
Yeah, that's not in a residential zone.
That's in B1 zone. I'm trying to get it wrong.
I guess that's the.
It's not down there in violation, right?
So shouldn't they be a violation of seventeen fifty, whatever the architectural standards are?
Well, it, it depends. If it's, if it's not being used temporarily, if it's a permanent structure, then what's? You know. I don't believe they're being permitted as a, as a accessory.
Structure.
Yeah.
So if there's a conex and there is.
It would just be nice to have code that says they're allowed any R1. Uh, for, for other than a temporary or not.
Well, what it says though, says all accessory structures other than temporary structures is permitted elsewhere in this section. Shall comply with any and all applicable construction codes. So I'll be out here. I don't think the conex complies with the codes. So it, and it's only temporary structures are permitted when a building permit has been issued for a principal structure, but only for so long as that permit is in effect.
Right, so that might be something that if I consult with Roy in the building side of things, um, he can. He can give me some code that would help. Clearly say.
Social muddification. So someone puts up a conex while they're building the house. The house is built, they, they've got occupancy, they've lived there for twenty years. But they never took down their conex and it's still there. Is that in violation? Especially since maybe the house has been sold twice since then?
I would think. Uh, but I don't know the building code well enough to know if it complies. I mean, structurally, they stack them twenty high on a ship, I mean.
Some of us have lived in them, yes.
Yes, I mean, there's just nothing super clear in, in the accessory structure standards that.
Okay.
Spell that out, and that is, I mean. If you go on Craigslist, um. They really push those things, you know, they're. They're readily available, and, and they're handy. They, they serve a great purpose. As a temporary, you know, that's fine, but. Or if they were developed into, you know, I mean, I've seen some of them that have been reworked into garden sheds and things like that, when they have windows and doors and. And it's hard to distinguish them as a, as a conex. So.
I see one specifically, address unknown, uh, on my watch, and it just, that, that example just pops into my mind.
Well, and I run into them occasionally. It seems out of place, but I, the code doesn't specifically say they're not allowed.
Yeah, I, I don't.
If, if you, I mean, you have to parse it to, to come to that conclusion. Or know the building code well enough to know that it doesn't meet current building code standards.
So basically. What we would have to say is that, and. I don't know a better word than conexes. Are permitted. As temporary accessory structures only. Right?
That's what the community feels they want. I mean, I, I don't have any objection to it one way or another. It's just hard to enforce.
Well, my problem is. My problem is that I think it's in strong disagreement with the recently passed architectural standards.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, the architectural standards are certainly fifty, but other than.
Yeah, where you prohibit metal siding.
Prohibit metal siding, we. You know, we say all this stuff. But then we never, there's no way you can tell me a conex is in, keeping with the spirit of the architectural standards. Right?
And maybe, maybe that's the direction, rather than writing more code, which the effort is to simplify. Um, you've already created the standards. Maybe I can just, uh, use that as the. The method to.
It was. Was that one forty or something different?
I can deny.
Miscellaneous, one of that is one fifty.
I can then apply to these. Report that there's implied temporary structures.
I believe it does. No, not, doesn't apply to accessory structure.
Yeah, well, not, not temporary.
Not temporary, it doesn't apply to accessory, I believe, but we'd have to go back more. So next meeting, we'll talk about that some more, Marshall. I'll probably remember with that up some more. Get an opinion that's to do with the recent architectural standards on the general provisions. Somehow prevent conexes as a non-temporary accessory from. Okay?
Well, there's nothing, you know, if, if you look at the, the, um. The temporary language in here, that doesn't say anything about metal siding there either. It doesn't look like it would be allowed as a temporary accessory structure either, if it's not a wood sided building.
Right. So that's what we need to figure out.
Those are some of the nuances that, you know, somebody comes in, can I do this? And I go to the code and.
Yep. That's why, and I, and I put a note in that section, perhaps say conex would allow, conexes are permitted as temporary structures, accessories, aren't involved. And that solves.
That would be great, yeah.
That would just solve all of the issues if we said that.
So.
Alrighty. Oh boy, this has been so much fun. Um, fences, walls and hedges, fifty one forty, fifty one thirty, there shouldn't be anything in there. We've talked about fences enough. Where I don't think we need to talk about that in the R1 code. Unless anybody has a dying need to talk about fences some more.
So.
I know you were gonna take me there.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So I haven't had this posed to me yet, but in all districts, it says no fence, wall or vegetation when used for screening. May exceed six feet in height. A chain link fence isn't necessarily used for screening.
Okay, I, I read this, and I'm gonna get an English teacher to fix the punctuation. The intended vegetation when used for screening. Oh, I read that. The screening, I think, only should apply to the vegetation. It should say no wall fence or vegetation used for screening. May exceed six feet.
Referred to vegetation.
Get rid of the comma.
Get rid of the comma and when. That's the intent.
That would be clear. That would be clear to me, but. Um, if I'm trying to get something more than a six foot fence, I can use the current written language.
No.
And, and probably.
Well, it's right below it says fences, walls and hedges may exceed, oh, I gotta, I gotta.
I see where you're, where you're coming from, but I can make a pretty good argument the other way too.
I read that right off, it's a. Bad use of commas. So. Cause it's obvious that, you know, that should apply to vegetation when used for screening. Alright, I've got that noted. So I've got the record copy of chapter seventeen, so I've got two notes on that. Anything else in fences we don't wanna talk about, Marshall?
Nope.
Seventeen fifty four, off street. Parking. Wow, we have a whole chapter on off street, off street parking. We haven't even looked at this at length. And I don't think we want to.
But off street parking. Code is fairly well written.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna go through this in detail today with everybody. I think, unless I would like any, I would offer anybody to read this and come back with additions next meeting. Um, I just, I've never read it, because I, I scanned it three times, and I always thought, oh, it looks pretty good. I would. You know, I've read it very slowly, a word for word, and I'll try to. Yeah, I think it's fine.
It's been easy to apply.
Okay, well, that's good.
A little heavy handed with commercial property.
Just attached, but it's easy to understand.
Yeah, it is true. Twenty each spaces.
Sorry.
Alright, so let's go through conditional uses today. Maybe I have to watch, um. Public and semi-public uses seventeen fifty oh four oh, and I know we're gonna find something in there. I know, I remember having seventeen fifty oh four oh, public and semi-public uses. Public condition, or conditional uses in any district. Parks, playgrounds, cemeteries, golf courses, public and private schools. Churches, community centers, childcare stations, fire stations, country clubs, utilities, substations, hospital clinics, a visualized freedom land airport. So any idea why that? I guess it's in any district, anywhere, these are a.
Except for in the business districts, they exclude libraries, police, fire station, hospital.
They're permitted use.
Yes.
So here it's a conditional use. And so help me out here, if you wanted to do a conditional use. For any one of these, you would have to go through a conditional use permit application.
If you wanna make use of a public or semi-public use as defined by this section of.
So basically, what comes up is church. You wanna put a church in an R1, you'd have to get a conditional use permit.
Or a fire station. We got conditional, uh, conditional use permits for each one of our vacuum stations that are located in the residential district.
Okay. Okay.
Over utilities, if the PUD needed to put a substation in or something like that, um. We are looking at potentially a conditional use permit for the tsunami evacuation tower. Those are public.
Okay. Anyways, any issue with those as a conditional use?
I'm just wondering if churches are a bit, I don't know, I have to look that up. Bring up religion issue.
No, I don't think, I think it's conditional use, so it's not prohibition. Many people just tell me wherever the great. Almost had a church that never got permitted to shit.
Yes.
We would allow them to apply.
Correct.
So that's why you can't say yes or no. You can allow them to apply and see, see how.
And there is a public input section on the conditional news, right?
Absolutely, yes.
There is the opportunity for multiple public inputs on an application for. So somebody wanted to put a church next door to Mark's house, you'd have to apply for a conditional. Right?
Correct.
In, in the hearings, I would always strongly listen to public info.
It's, it, I, it's, it's my thought that he more looks at code, what's legally allowed or required, either constitutionally, city code, state code.
And that's where you get a trade in related work.
Yeah, he, he would consider those regulations.
Alright, this is one of my favorites, because I never knew this existed, resource extraction. Um, a conditionally used permit should require to remove possible sand and gravel or natural deposits below eighteen inches above the center line of. The, of the adjacent road. Do we have any resource extraction going on in R1?
I've never looked at this code specifically for, um, for, for contacts, and I can tell you that, um, there are several instances where. Um, eighteen inches. Above the center line of the road are taken out. But if the volume of fill comes out, um, to more than four hundred ninety nine yards, then it invokes a seepage permit process, um. I can tell you that resource extraction, I. I would almost guarantee you there's never been a conditional use permit issued in the last thirty years.
Yeah, so I'm.
In the city.
Can we just get rid of this as an R1 conditional use? Yeah, we're trying to simplify, and it's just, I was really taken aback. That you could apply for a conditional use permit to do a sand borrow. In an R1 district. Cause that would be the most possible resource extraction that would occur. I'm trying to think why. In R1, we wouldn't want resource extraction. I know, Marshall's reading it again. He's like, I, I read it like three times, um.
Well, I, I just issued a clearing and grading permit. I think clearing for, for the purpose of. Of removing sand from a lot, either to develop or to, you know, alter the topography for, for a building. Um, falls more under a clearing permit. I've never read this, I, when I see the, when I'm looking through code and I'm looking for things that apply, when I see resource abstraction. I think mining.
No, well, no, and that's, that's a sand, a sand.
But I don't, but I don't think about removing eighteen inches of sand as mining. I look at that as clearing, filling or grading. And if they remove more than four hundred ninety nine yards, it invokes the secret process in which they have to get review of, um. The, the environmental agencies.
So I mean, this may be old, where somebody once wanted to do a sand bar. But my, I would like, and I'm gonna look for a thumbs up, is get rid of this as a judicial use in the R1.
Let's make sure it's not in there to comply with the state or a federal statute. That's the only reason I could think that it'd be written that way and still be there. I, I might call my consultant and see what's going on.
We'll find out. Cheers. Alright, so get back with it before that, but my, my thought is, I'm just the thought of having a sand bar next to me. And in R1, isn't something appealing?
Well, I know, but it happens more often than you.
As part of construction.
As part of construction.
That's different than what I believe the intent of this is.
Yeah.
Because what you're doing is in a clearing and grading. Construction permit, you're taking care of that.
But it doesn't say, when, when, when you read this code, it doesn't say why you're taking it out. It just says if you are.
The term extraction. I got it. Alright, Marshall, we'll talk about that one. I just, it blew me away. Alrighty. I think we'll get through seventeen sixteen forty easily. All uses not simply listed as permitted. Or conditional uses of the district, or prohibited uses, provided that the city planner may determine that he wants to let you do it.
That is not what happened.
No, I know that. And actually seventeen oh six oh five oh really restricts you. And what you today even do. Well, I can't think of any addition where you. Taken what is other than permitted or conditional use and allowing.
In, in the cases where I thought it was a, um, and, and I'll use the food bank as an example. Um, in, in the commercial districts, um, broker stores are allowed as a permitted use. A, a food bank operates as close to a broker store as a person can think, you know, I, and that's, so. I, I considered that a like use and was not gonna require that they go through the conditional use process, because there's a public gathering. Uh, the advice of the city attorney was, you know, anything that's not listed specifically. Um, you should run those through a conditional use process, as opposed to using that language that says if it's, if it's similarly. Alike, then you can permit it.
And for now, we will leave seventeen fifty oh four OB. Who would get served? Then homeless services, yeah. Homeless services are prohibited in the R1 zone. She's fine. And I'm gonna try to push on through density regulations, and then we'll probably quit for the net. No, we can do the rest of this. I have nothing else to add on. One single family dwelling is allowed for establishing recorded law according to class existing of August first, two thousand and three. Or is legally created thereafter, the city shall apply some of the requirements. I'm gonna ask the two experts on this side of the table, has that ever been an issue? That language, it's basically one single family dwelling, that's it. What you remember here? Uh, seventeen sixty zero five zero. So I handed it over there. It's the bottom of the very first page. On the density regulations, because the density regulations are sort of. Not very explicit in our single family low density. One single family dwelling. I don't see any issue with that. Have you had anything come up ever? By arguing that one, Marshall?
No, alright, um, where, where it starts to get, when we start talking about ADUs and. What's been going on recently in the state to increase density and eliminate the effective. Classification of an R1, but that's where, that's where this is gonna probably be challenged.
Yeah, later on. But the second one, subdivision, short plats, replats, body line adjustments. Have a minimum lot size of seven thousand two hundred square feet, and I think we have talked, we would leave that. In the R1, but not.
Yes.
And maintain the character of the R1, and then look for opportunities of smaller plots in the R, medium and R1. And maintain the character of the R one, and then look for opportunities of smaller lots in the R, medium and R one. This is. Minimum front yard depth twenty. Yard five, rear yard depth twenty-five, unless you have other restrictions as we know, we already discussed. Have we had any additional? Wetlands trying to push people into the front yard depth of twenty feet, or is it just that one instance so far?
I have one instance, the last hearing that we had, we um, oh, I have one coming up. Where we're gonna ask for a front yard setback variance to escape the wetlands, yeah. There's really nowhere for them to go, if we don't let them go into the front yard setback, then then we're gonna prohibit development. That's kind of where I am at.
Some intended use?
Yeah. And and that's the argument that we'll take to the hearing examiner is, this is the only alternative, as opposed to going to wetlands, which, you know.
Is an alternative.
It is an alternative, it's just not the preferred alternative.
How many credits you got left?
Not enough.
How many you got left?
If if everything that I've ran through the last hearings um. Results in a check across, then I know somewhere just. We have the opportunity to earn, I think, three more, when it's up to six change. There's a huge interest in these inexpensive wetland wetland lots, so we're. We're processing. Yeah, well, you've got a wetland on your lot, the price usually goes down, I mean, that's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing from the the real estate community.
Is that, okay, yeah, just thinking, the city doesn't remember these holes.
I'm I'm trying to work a process to figure out how to get those rolled into mitigation, maybe, or if there's a minimum area, we're we're working that angle.
Core lots, minimum depth twenty feet on flanking streets, minimum yard depth, ten accepting garage, vehicle entrance is on flanking streets. So I mean, I don't think anybody had any issues with the setbacks. And I think it would really more come to Marshall as it. Um, this really hasn't been an issue to people prior to interpret setbacks, hasn't it?
No, it's uh pretty straightforward, we we just, my last ser- series of hearings, we had a a house that um. And I think it started out, the design of the house originally had a garage entrance that would have met the setback on one side, they changed where the garage is at. And ended up with something less than what would have been allowed by this section of code, and so we had a variance to extend onto that.
We do not need F anymore. We're doing, is F already covered? I'm gonna go back and look. I thought we covered siding in the architectural standards, didn't we? Again, I'm trying to.
Yeah, that is. That is covered by seventeen fifty two ten.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So why would we cover it twice, is my question? If we're trying to simplify.
Yeah.
Seventeen fifty two ten. I'm gonna find that before we go. And have that valorized, you don't?
It's gonna be C or D.
Yes. Uh, did you last time?
It is.
Picture of finishes, same words. Wood, wood stylus, and a lap, rather than metallic period siding.
So we also include uh only, well, can only use it as an accent?
Yeah, seventeen fifty two ten J is way more comprehensive and better than. What we have here, so an interest in simplification, I think we'll just get rid of it. And then the old, everything done otherwise included. Um, the last thing is manufactured homes, I don't want to defer to either side of the room if there's anything you want to do on the manufactured homes. I mean, I think this, personally think it's okay, permanent raised foundation with a crawl space. All local design standards applicable to other homes, that ties them back to seventeen fifty.
Yeah.
Two ten, I'm glad to see you're starting to really push that into town, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Uh, manufactured homes shall be therm- thermally equivalent to state energy code, which is awesome. External siding. While structures all buildings, that's. Not sure why that's in there. And I guess. My question, does seventeen, if you enter seventeen fifty two ten J, which is next year finishes. Apply to the primary structure and accessory structure, right?
Yes.
So we don't need F. E, I mean, we don't need E again under manufactured homes. That's covered under seventeen fifty two ten.
Similar in appearance.
Yeah. External siding of all primary, of all primary structures and accessory and accessory structures shall be similar appearance.
Does that same language appear in J?
Yes.
Okay, then yes, that could be certain.
Okay. So we successfully got through R one today. And we got a couple of little things. That we go through. So, the point of the beast of this effort. Is. I will take home both copies of that and sort of outline what we did, and I'm gonna leave that big blob. On point brown, undesigned, and we can talk about that some more the next week, and we do a a feedback and follow up on that, um. Then I want to start looking, and it's in this package, R two R three. You start talking medium, we need to start defining medium, when you look at this, the medium, all of the R two and above are extremely short. It's amazing how little is in those codes, so, so vashing them in. Through medium and a high, talking about, as we also, we all look spatially in. In the narrative, as we look at both. Opportunities for minimum lot sizing. You know, do we do it only in R H or N, or do we do sort of downsizing, minimal lot sizing? And the ability to subdivide well, the common law something. That all makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Maybe there's two different, maybe there's one for the R I and then there's one for the R H. Sort of provide those alternatives.
There's always been, in in my entire tenure, um even, you know, listening to discussions before I got into planning. There's always been a significant interest in smaller lot sizes and with detached.
I mean, it's right in our comprehensive plan. It said, seek opportunities to decrease, you know, minimum lot size, that's where you're not hurting other things. So again, we're only talking about changing lot sizes in R Ns, R Hs, and we've seen nothing. Of taking something that's a current single and making an R M, R H, never, not one, we haven't one.
No.
So the only lot size changes would be R Ns, R Hs. And then when it's sort of, as we do walkabouts, we're gonna sort of get into the. You know, what do we do about um. Areas that have become so overrun with single family. That they're almost a fact of single family, I don't think we've really seen that yet. I mean, not fair view, not really. There's many other, I think there's enough smatterings of duplexes and triplexes. That nobody can. Can make a claim that I I bought it in R H, but it's becoming all.
Yeah, it's the only, the only one that really scans out is the one over off of Long Kingdom there, we've got the R four, R five.
Yeah, we didn't talk about that much, I think we, I, some of us may want to take a look, because I know what we're talking about, where you go over the canal bridge. Take a ride all over Kingdom, that's currently our farm, and it may, that may be an opportunity to make it our own. Uh, exactly what you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Just on the other side of the. So, next walkabout we said was which? Ten?
Eight and eleven.
Eight, ten and eleven, on that side of the street, fairly easy one, that gets you around the Trident. Gets you to my house, please resign my house. All right, anybody, I would do eight, ten, eleven. I'm walking distance to my house, that's easy. Um, I I hold it all the time with the tridents. The other guy that always guessed me is, I gotta see if there's any triplexes or fourplexes on. That's butterclams. On the northeast side of dark planet.
On razor plants?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there, are there some out there? I know.
One, at the, at that rock plant.
Yeah, you're right. So I mean, that may be stuff where we just leave it R R, and, you know, even though it's ninety percent single family, and it's one.
And it continues to develop that, if you.
Same family?
Yeah.
And we're we're not saying, we're not saying you can't do single family in R M.
Right.
So, just beware that you're in a medium density, there is the opportunity for all the flops to get some, and all that stuff. Anything else for the good of the order?
Next question.
Go ahead.
We could be talking about the uh density activity, fifteen and twenty. B one, B two. And as I remember, a couple of months ago, we checked, there were probably about sixty ninety lots on the. There's a bit of that zoning.
All the way down the end, yeah.
Yeah, and. And the rest of the houses, rentals, whatever you want to call them, the problem is. They're all so small, actually mainly it's so small, I don't really use as much commercial activity, except. Little thing, I'm not sure why. But we're running out of areas to do some commercial activity, the only open space left. Sounds is a big wetland, but. We should do something while we still can about some areas down there for commercial activity of some kind, in large cars. One of the things we really have is that shopping center in the corner, Ringview Drive and Boulevard. You know, the big blue areas. Yeah, J two, I think. Understand they're kind of low, but it's far away down left, it's right now. Not, nobody's doing anything on the road, no house, no nothing there. For enough money on it, you can make a parcel useful, I'm sure. Right now, we don't have anything in that neighborhood, we can do anything wet at all.
Are you talking about B two type activity?
Yeah, B one, I could up there do some, B, B, B one.
You know, we also, with a little bit of undeveloped, we're competing with R M, R H in there. And quite frankly, it's. Had discussions with several people, and. We've really run out of opportunities for B two. Do, and I think with the residential mix, we'll be able to do some. B one type of activity, or provide more opportunities for that type of commercial activity.
Some, but we don't have enough, let's say, for a safe one. Something like that, and you probably limited areas of acres within the community for that kind of thing.
All we do is just own.
Well, yeah. Or or something of that of that size.
I know, two or three right now. Awesome notice. For that size.
That's just not very much, you're a community of seven thousand right now, it's too long before a ten thousand. Or just meeting the county.
So you're asking us to consider to carve out some of the undeveloped areas, and.
Oh, we still can, yeah. I don't, I don't know who these people are that own it, they're selling like a city attorney. But at least, at least, consider something we can still set aside while we still can. Before they become, who knows what. And it may be that the only people who can actually spend the money to fill those, do the mitigation, some of the other commercial.
I mean, the obvious one always is gonna be the cut off prime. You have the one round.
That's already sold, yeah.
And that's obvious, an opportunity for exactly what you're talking about.
True.
And, you know. We don't own, we don't control, Marshall, you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I don't, I I mean, based on its view, I don't see a parcel like that being developed for groceries. You know, or or that type of commercial, I could see it being developed as, you know.
Resort tourists.
Resort tourists getting up higher, because the views of the harbor there, once you get up to the second story, you're pretty spectacular, you got a view of Mount Rainier to the east and whatnot. And and, you know, I mean, I I understand what you're saying, Paul, but you know. Based on what happened here, if you were to open something like this up, unless you zone this type of activity out of it. If you opened up a commercial over here in seventeen for um for B one type uses, I could see a bunch more nightly rentals going in there.
Because what's since, since we, since. My rental rentals are restricted to every one ton except those areas. Those areas naturally, if you come nightly rental areas, squeezing out other possibilities.
Oh, God, we've we've had this discussion repeatedly here.
So now what do we have left?
I I agree, we just need to. Go look at that, and if we look hard at that.
You would have to get away from the pyramid zoning for those, if if you were gonna explore that concept.
Would have, yeah, would have to be commercial only.
Yeah.
May it be.
Commercial only.
Multi-family and commercial, or whatever you want to do there, but be very specifically zoned for something to allow. Commercial extension.
All right. Definitely something. Anything else for the. Congratulations, Mark. We will do, uh, that was some great discussion, guys, I appreciate it. All right, we have the opportunity for. Public, uh, actually commissioning reports, anything to report, Paul, other than what you just mentioned, Gary?
Other than continuing to review the maps and better educate myself on what we have here.
Paul? Hey, Mark?
Nothing.
You still plan on trying to go on, go into that thing?
Seventeen.
Okay, yes. And after that, we're gonna have to talk about the uh flanking and walking mission, and we see what they're still doing. All right, so we open floor for public communication.
Hey, I got the feeling today that our uh national wetlands in Ocean Storm, and we'll talk here. Aren't safe. Uh, why would you be talking about the land of the perimeter? That where the golf courses going in. That's a blue zone now, the land, so that today they're talking about. Resorting that, a multi-medium and high density housing. I gotta ask you in your walkabout, if you head south on Parable. You get down and look at two lots on Eastside of Parable, that were. Stripped about eighty percent last year, ten sixty over, ten six and six. They're at least three foot below road elevation. There was stolen material that was brought in. To bring it up to shoulder height of road height. And that entire area, for the most part, wetlands. And what I heard you say today, it's just built through the mitigation process, no big deal. But to me, you're destroying and no longer our natural wetlands, here in Washington.
No.
Well, I guess.
And it's currently zone by density. Anybody that wanted to do anything would have to go through the delineation of wetland law. That's the answer, we would never, we can't change. Wetland.
Yeah, yeah, I'll expand on that a little bit, um, so. If if you look, what we're talking about, what you're talking about is this blue area down there, and I know. I I went through the mitigation process with the owners on the two lots specifically that you're talking about. The land that was cleared was identified by a wetland biologist as upland wetland buffer. And they only impacted the wetland buffer. For the minimum purpose of of putting in two small, very small, single family residences. Which is what those lands were platted for. Um, if if the city doesn't allow mitigation. Um, and development of a piece of property for which it was platted, then it's considered a government take. And and that's where we get on to a slippery slope of um. You know, not allowing people who've purchased a a piece of property zone. People don't buy a piece of property that's a wetland with the intent of not doing anything with it. Um, the city did that with the weather wax property, and its sole purpose is so that we can sell credits. And the weather wax property, have you walked it, or are you familiar with that, with what it is and what it's being used for? Is to offset impacts to a place like that, so we impacted some buffer there. They purchased credits in this property over here, specifically so that there's no net loss of habitat within the community. Um, this property will never be developed, and that's, that's the, you know, the purpose of the wetland. Uh, mitigation made, the weather wax wetland mitigation made. Um, these other properties in there, they were zoned and platted for uh the zoning for which they are identified. And if the government denies them the access to develop those properties for which they were platted, then it's a take.
And that's the.
They covered a lot of lots of wetlands right now.
They are, and and it's extremely difficult to get a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, it takes a um either a nationwide permit. Or a special permit from the Corps of Engineers to do fill of the wetland itself. The buffers are another story. Um. And that's what we've pushed most people that have property with wetland on them. Is to stay out of the wetland proper and only mitigate the uh the buffer itself. And and that is a more palatable way to maintain, you know, the habitat of the wetland and still allow. And and this is a new thing that has um come up. In the last year is a reasonable use exception of wetland buffer. It would be the same thing for a wetland, but we have not gone through a wetland reasonable use exception where we've had the Corps authorize a fill yet. We have not authorized any fill of wetland in Ocean Shores.
Okay, so if a lot is completely encumbered by wetlands, I mean, totally encumbered by wetlands. The way I understood the rezoning today is someone can access that and fill a multi-medium to high density structure.
If they could get the Corps to authorize a fill permit, then then that could happen on any one of those lots down there that are fully encumbered by wetlands. It's my opinion, based on discussions I've heard with the Corps and ecology, that if you're fully encumbered and it's a high enough value wetland. And uh and I just got into the city's inventory today to look and see how much high value wetland we have out there. Some of the stuff that I thought was higher value was not identified um in the survey. As super high value wetland, so the Corps may allow fill in those instances where it's not. Um like our interdunal wetlands on the uh. On the west side of Ocean Shores, those can't be replaced anywhere else in the in the country, they have to reside on the edge of the ocean, that's the that's the definition of an interdunal wetland. My guess is the Corps will not allow fill of those wetlands. And so what we've done is we've pushed people um in their development processes. Out of the wetlands and into the buffers, and it's an easier process and it's more palatable. To um to develop buffers in those areas where you do have a high value wetland.
It's again, it's currently zoned on that. So our.
Well, I know what you're great fill in. In an area where, of course, it's not, you say that there's a governmental body that will.
There's there's a process to do that even today, it's not like if you change the zoning or what would be allowed in that area, that the process changes, there's still a process. And a pathway to fill and develop wetlands and wetland buffers. Um the criteria is pretty tough, if you get into the wetlands themselves and they have a very high score. The higher the score, a category wetland, uh category one wetland is the highest value wetland. Uh available. We've got very little of that in Ocean Shores, we do have category two, which is um. Is the next, you know, most prevalent wetland, and then there's a lot of category three and four here, which are just. Yeah, the the estuarine. Uh wetland along the bayside is actually where most of our category one along the airport and and out in that area. North and south of the airport, that's where our highest value wetlands are actually located in the city.
Well, the resource I use is great, great harbor. You know, wetlands now.
Yeah. We have, we also have another map online uh on the city's website that has a little bit better detail, and that there's actually an inventory that was done in. I think the early two thousands or late nineteen nineties, nine ninety eight. Is that when that was done? Okay, where we actually had a team of biologists coming to Ocean Shores and and go around to a lot of the wetlands that were easily identifiable and rate them. And so, so I use that as another resource. The other thing that I use when determining a wetland, whether I'm gonna require a delineation or not, is my boots on the ground, I go look for vegetation, hydro soil conditions. And the other things that would indicate um jurisdictional wetlands exist on a piece of property. And then and then we require they get a delineation, and then they have to go through the process.
And again, there's nothing where we talked about those areas. It's existing, you're not actually increasing the intensity.
Well, we're very fortunate to have Marshall.
Well, I said that there's there's mixed reviews on that. Those who wanna build wetlands, see, I could go somewhere else and do.
And those of us that. You're not being the only one, completely understand this state.
It is, it's it's, yeah.
Yeah, no decision making authority whatsoever, trusting, we don't. It's all city and state. So none of that will ever change in any of the wetlands. We're not, we're not attempting to take any wetlands, we're looking at opportunities. To have things that are currently zoned, R A, R nine, and redefine it as medium and hot. Then all of the processes. Any other questions here, go ahead.
Um listening to the discussion that you were talking about. Near the harbor burnaway is the same.
With within the shoreline jurisdiction, there is a height restriction of thirty five feet, and if you um. If you wanna exceed that, depending on if there's a view corridor for lots behind that, you have to go through and get a uh a variance through the shoreline process. And and I think that's a fairly rigorous um process that involves public communication, uh public input, those kinda things.
That's the shoreline, which typically extend two hundred feet.
It's the shoreline jurisdiction extends two hundred feet from the ordinary high water mark of any body of water. Um within Ocean Shores. The uh the large tract of land. That the Quinaults own across from the marina is not in the shoreline jurisdiction. So they would not have that thirty five foot height restriction uh there.
And once this thing comes up, there'll be an increase in taxes. Or those of also on residence.
I don't know that the assessed value um. Restate your question, please.
Um what I'm saying is that once this is owned by. And then alongside there, there's people that have homes over there, want to build homes over there. Because there's this hotel thing here, just like um. Ocean. View, road, they also have a lot of hotels on, that means when we zone, then these taxes will go up, right?
I guess that's more of a county assessor question. Um if if you you could look at that two different ways, from a residential standpoint, um. Is it more attractive to have a high density type structure across from your house, or is it less attractive? So if you consider it less attractive, then it's possible your taxes would go down. That's not very likely in today's climate, but um. Um the it it just depends on if it raises the value of your property, and that's probably more a county assessor question.
Or just looking at sort of. Matching comprehensive layout with the. With the current zone, there's a free for our lap, you know, on top of that, looking at. And we said realities on top, it's the point brown marine view drive, that area in between there. Um basically the bridge shore. There's a lot of uses in there that due to pyramid zone. Due to the fact that's the only place you can do transit rentals, it's probably B one. It's become sort of a, it's a area that the original fathers in the comprehensive zone intended to be. Sort of the B two area, where you would have storage units, you would have browsing on, you would have repair shops. Become completely scaly by residential. Due to the, due to the lack of transportation. So what do we do with that reality? That's really what we would bring to the city council of recommendations, what can they do with that reality now going home? And that's gonna be a lot of public. Involvement on what to do with that reality, what do we do now, we're not tearing down transit levels, it's illegal. Um. We're not gonna make the rallyards move out, so how do you manage that piece right now?
Sure is, you know, and the state, the state. All the energies and controlled land have a percentage of an objective that they want and have high density. And based on, we're not urban, we're never really be very urban. So how do we manage that and have a new component of a larger scene? I'm not sure if we're saying that there, if it's the objective of multiple or highly for the dwellings to.
I don't think there is, I've never.
Yeah, the the only, the only emphasis that we're seeing now, um like you said, is in the urban areas, um because there's. There's a perceived housing shortage. And and I think they're they're trying to, you know, push that in the more urban areas, and there's discussions being had in the more rural areas like Ocean Shores. You know, how do we accommodate more people or um. I I don't think they're looking at trying to increase our density um to the point of becoming an urban center.
I think, like what we've said, again, preserve the nature and character of existence in town, always one of our number one priorities. Anything we've talked about meeting the high is currently R nine, R eight, R five, R seven, until you get on the look at that map, you have no idea how much high density zoning there currently. It's just never been developed that far. Was probably gonna end up, I got feeling, we're gonna end up with. Four single family at the end of this than we started. Cause there are some areas that have just been, and I live the park, well, it's a very good possibility. But as we look at doing that, it's like, what about the one guy that built the triplex, and what about the guy that owns four lots? And says thirty years from now, I wanna build a triplex, you may go to all of them, those are the hard parts, you can only optimize. People that own land that haven't developed it.
And then Ocean Shores, um my dad was here when they, when they first started offering properties for sale. And and there were people buying, you know, twenty or thirty lots at a time with that investment. Mentality of, you know, I can do this on this lot, you know, so they purchased it with the thought that. You know, I'm gonna turn my my fifty thousand dollars into two hundred thousand dollars in in twenty twenty six, you know? Um so so we have to be somewhat sensitive to those who made investments with the intent based on current zoning.
As we make recommendations, I think what you're gonna see, you're gonna see very little changing. And see a lot more. Grouping R two, R three, R four, and taking R five, R six, R seven, moving that high. And we may find out that through the reality, very little of that type of. Trying to create opportunities that currently are not allowed in the current zoning. And whether those ever happen or not, if someone wants to be X, Y, and Z. Uh down south, uh by the jetty area. They may not be able to do it under the current zoning. But maybe if we change it so that that opportunity exists, someone might. Five, ten years from now.
Well, I guess my question stems from, but they may communicate in Columbia University.
Yes.
An influx of actually departments, high density came in, it changes demographics if it's not managed very well. And so we're in a very special place and we're in the process of change and transition. I think I've helped a lot, you didn't know a lot, and go forward, but we need to do very carefully because we will not be the same place. In ten years if we don't do it.
Correct, and and along those lines, I served on the Tacoma planning commission. So we talked about those very things on mixed use and how to take. This area and expand that opportunities. And it's it's complicated, right, uh and it takes a long time to do it, just like we expect this process will take a long time to do it. But you have to take those things into consideration, what's available, what's growth look like? And that's very difficult, cause usually your crystal ball's gonna crack in, you just can't quite see exactly. What it looks like, but if you provide that opportunity. Then maybe you can achieve some of that growth in a in a manner that works for you. Five years ago, nobody would predict that end of port of all single family residential. Nobody.
Uh number one, thank you so much for your. What going on, thank you, that's why I just wanna comment. I know you're gonna bring up comments. Next one, if you guys could get some clarification, clarification on this. Cause I know people that don't like. Know that these these ones. Been there all the time. Patient and all kinds of things, so. It would help to do some kind of clarification on on comments, and then I guess just one question with that. If there were comments that have been allowed on the property for several years already. Are they? Outward, I guess. Yeah, it was. Did you change the law or?
It's it's not changing, it's clarifications, it's a clarification of what's going on right now. The issue is that I would have a strong argument that you can't do connects on the current architectural standards. Current current actual tur- current architectural standard only applied to this. So that's the issue, right?
Yeah. Not necessarily, if it was not installed as a as a legal structure or a permitted use back in the day, then it's not considered legal non-conforming use. Um and and a person is supposed to challenge that, but um. I guess an example, if you put a a bulkhead in on your on your canal front lot. Uh back in the day, but you didn't get a permit for it, um that doesn't mean that just because you got away with it back then. The city's gonna turn a blind eye today.
That's a good start.
And I think you could apply the same concept to conxes or other non-lethal um non-conforming structures.
Um what about within infrastructure, I mean, you know, not really developments itself, where I came from. Infrastructure comes in person, very early before, before you develop the in- uh area into a community and homes and all this kind of stuff. Right now, we are lacking in infrastructure, the roads are narrow. It's narrow, and then like when we wanna walk our path, or walk our, you know, um. Or even walk, or even try to run on there, it's kinda dangerous. So I'm wondering, you know, is there any lessons to do this kind of stuff, you know, ocean tourists? Develop the infrastructure or all such.
Well, I think, Marshall, I'm gonna answer this, cause I know you're really through this. I think generally, water, sewer, we're in great shape. Oh, we are, we have capacity.
Well, drinking, you haven't drank our water.
No, I mean, I'm I'm not talking volume. We have capacity, cause everything was designed for the flooded lots, that's the beauty of living here, right, Marshall?
All of the insu- infrastructure that's required to fully build out the city of Ocean Shores is in the ground today.
It's in the ground today, it's building every lot in quantum, we can talk quality and that's. The roads, just due to the natural, the roads, we had this great discussion with some of the blue zones. This community was never viewed as a walking group. So does the community wanna become a walking community? Absolutely. Who's gonna pay? That's the issue, so. Little pieces, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna at all talk about, I don't know anything else. We would love to figure out a way to make this community more walkable and viable, so we're actually working on it, slowly but surely. So, um the rest of the infrastructure, that's the beauty of this town, the founding fathers forty years ago was using. Put everything underground that we need to put on the ground, these people made a new thing there, but there's no other community that I've ever been in. Where to do an expansion, you don't have to have. It's just the style of the community that we have back in the day, other than nowhere to walk. Absolutely, all, everything is being maintained, but the standard capacity and size of the pipe can grow at the time, that's a pretty good engineer. That's, I think we have, Rita, anything for the group? I know you do. No?
Nope.
Alrighty, alrighty, I've got a gentleman paper open, do we have a motion to adjourn? Martin Wood, seconded, Kerry, Martin Kerry, that's the meeting. All in favor? The next meeting, July twenty fifth, twenty thousand three, Kerry, you're on the.